Good afternoon, everyone. Are we ready to get started?
We're ready here. We've got six members present here on this side.
Okay. We will call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting for the Energy Consumers Advisory Committee, the first one in history, I think, on March 11, 2013. My name is Lupi Ramos. I'm your chairwoman. We will start with call to order and roll call, please.
Mark Larson.
Here.
Michael Labadi.
Here.
Shorty Hickonbottom. Gil Perez. Freddie Nunez. John Hernandez. Michael Anderson. Esther Gomez. Lee Osborne.
Here.
Mark Weber.
Present.
Eduardo Garcia. Richard McNicky.
Present.
Obviously Lupi Ramos Watson is here. Debra McKay.
Here.
Becky Broughton. Patricia Salley.
Present.
And Stephen Baird. Oh, Stephen Baird.
Present.
And Paul Gibson.
Here.
We've got a quorum. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson just walked in here in Old Central, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rosa Maria. We will continue with the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number two, public comment period. This is the time set aside for any member of the audience wishing to address the committee to please make themselves known. If you'd please step forward to the podium, either in Imperial County or in Coachella Valley, we would love to hear from you at this time. Vice Chair Gomez, do we have anyone stepping forward in Imperial County?
Not at this moment.
Okay, we have no one stepping forward in Coachella Valley either, so I will close the public comment period and we will move on to our first item, which is the Ramon Substation Capacitor Bank Edition. Mr. Sandoval.
Good afternoon, members of the Energy Advisory Committee. My name is Juan Carlos Sandoval, Assistant Manager for any department. And today I'm here to make this presentation about the Ramon Substation 92 KV Capacitor Bank Edition. I'll start with the project description as an introduction. The project consists of an engineering procurement, an installation of a 92 KV 28-megawatt capacitor bank to be connected to Ramon Substation South Bus. And this is a technical project, you know, in the nature of this will provide reactive power to the system. And I got a question at the board meeting about what is reactive power. Therefore, I have put together a brief presentation that pretty much has an analogy to, in order to explain this. Can you go to? Okay, and for this, I'm going to use this bicycle analogy. This is a tandem bicycle where the bikers in the front are pretty much the generators. The passengers in the back are pretty much the customer loads. When the customers are pretty much sitting straight, you know, there's less resistance, you know, the bikers, which is the generators, are pretty much carrying their load, you know, with less resistance. Can you go to the next, please? The analogy about reactive power is when the customer flips, oh, flips the switch and turn on the air conditioning, which has electric motors that demand react, this reactive power, which is the power that is needed to create these magnetic fields that interact inside the motor, you know, in this representation or analogy, it's, the customer pretty much leans to one side on the bicycle. What this represents for the generator is that he, the generator will have to counteract for this requirement. You know, they still, it is the same weight of the customer, the same load, but now the generator will have to make an extra effort. Can you go to the next one? This compensation is the generator, or in this case, the biker, will have to counteract and lean on the other side in order to respond. In this case, the generator will produce the reactive power that is needed by the load by doing this action. In this case, this project consists of a capacitor bank, which is a way to producing this reactive power that is needed by the load. In the system, we have all these generators, and normally, a way to operate the system more effectively with less losses is to have the generator go back to the center, in this case, it's going to be ready for any system disturbance in order to control the voltage. So I hope this explained, pretty much, the nature of reactive power, how is it assist in the system. Going back to the presentation. This capacitor bank is going to be designed for future expansion to 43.2 megabar at a minimum cost. All the major equipment is going to be installed, breakers, relays, et cetera, and the expansion is going to consist just adding the capacitor banks, you know, more cans to the racks. The project estimated cost is $2.117 million, and the estimated in-service date for the project is April 2014. In terms of justification for the project, as we mentioned before, you know, in this analogy, the capacitor banks are needed to improve the system voltage during steady state and system disturbance by freeing up the generators from reproducing reactives. Also, they're going to supply this energy that is needed by the inductive loads. And one of the things that is important to note, in a Coachella, well, Imperial and Coachella Valley, because of the nature of our load and the weather that we have, the very hot weather we have in the summer, I can say that most, more than 50% of our load during the summer is pretty much air conditioning load, which require a lot of motors, you know, for the fans, for the compressors. So this motor load will require this capacitor banks. So this is a way to compensate and provide this energy that is needed. Also, this capacitor bank is going to reduce any reactive flows that we could have with our neighboring balancing authority, in this case, the California ISO. As I mentioned before in this analogy, it reduces the generators to having to carry this reactive power, and it will make it more efficient and utilize less fuel. Also, they will be ready to respond to any emergency, you know, in, as needed, in order to support the system voltage. The capacitor bank also supports the export renewable resources to the ISO, you know, maintaining a healthy and good voltage supports the export renewables. And with this, staff recommends, the Energy Consumer Advisory Committee to recommend the board to approve the next board meeting, the Major Work Authorization P 6760, in the amount of $2.117 million. Any questions you might have?
Vice Chair Gomez, do we have any questions in Imperial Valley?
Yes, Mr. Labadi.
Juan Carlos, is this, is this our share of the RAS? Is that part of that, of the RAS on the 92, as far as our relationship with the Cal ISO?
No.
On the 92 bank?
No, the capacitor bank is a project that has been identified through the planning studies, as needed.
Okay, you have listed here, it's a line, everything in the budget, but yet it says it hasn't been funded. You can't find the funding. Why is that? If it's?
Ramon Cap Bank?
Well, the project is, has a line in the budget, E8, line 21, and said funding for the project has not yet been identified. And that's in.
It's, well, I have worked with the controller, and the project has been identified in the proposed budget. You know, that's what I can tell you is, I work with, in identifying the funding.
Well, this was, be given, I believe, given to all of us.
Well, I, I can verify that, but I know, I don't, we don't have many projects for 2013, and this is one of the few projects that I'm pretty sure that we included in the budget for this year.
Okay, okay.
A question. On, I think on your last statement, you said that this new bank will give us the opportunity to work with Cal ISO. Is this on transmitting renewables that the IID has in their power that they can export and make money off of? Is this a new stream of money for the, for the district?
Yes. Yeah, this capacitor banks support the export renewables, and we have been working with several interconnection requests, and any export renewables in excess of the 600 ma what we have right now, so rating for path 42 will require additional bar support, and this, this will help.
And are we getting, the IID getting a wheeling fee out of that? And if it is, is there an estimate of what we might be able to get back on our improvements?
It's, it's a side, if, is a buy product, you know, or benefits, yes, when we sell this extra capacity or transmission wheeling capacity, we are going to recover funding.
And where does that money that you recover from the funding go to? What account does it get credited back to?
It goes to a general, do you have?
This upgrade is, is in large measure to lessen ID's dependence on vars from the Edison system. It is not identified specifically for a generator interconnection, but when ID funds an upgrade to the system like this, it goes into the overall cost of the transmission system, and it is rolled into what's called a revenue requirement. And in the future, when ID does a cost of service analysis and then spreads the cost of transmission across its retail customers and its generator transmission service customers, it'll be factored into that. That's the method by which we recover that.
Okay. And let me see if I understand this right. This cost is being paid by generators? Is that correct?
No, this capacitor bank is going to be funded by IID ratepayers, because the need has been identified as a real system reliability need. You know, we have all this load in the thousand pounds area, and we have identified that we need a bolt to support. We have 92 KV capacitor banks in the Coachella area, already installed in Avenue 42, Coachella Switching Station, Avenue 58, but we're missing this reactive support in this area of the system.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez.
I'm new, I'm new here, so the first question that popped up in my mind was, why wasn't this part of the planning process? Why the urgency? Why a special meeting for this particular item?
This project has been identified in our transmission plan before, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a new project.
But why the urgency for a special meeting to do this, rather than having come to us at our last meeting? Is it already on the, on the board's agenda for approval this next time around, or? It's just, to me, it just appears that there's a reason for calling a special meeting for the urgency of passing this, and I'm just wondering what that is.
At the last board meeting, Director Galindo has made it, made it very clear to staff that she wanted all energy manager matters to come to the Consumer Advisory Committee for recommendation. She specifically wanted major work authorizations to come before the committee so that they had a good sense and, of what was required for the system, and that they could make a recommendation then to the board. So that's the purpose. The, the matters that you're seeing today are time sensitive, and some more so than others, but it was mostly to economize on, on your time that, since we were calling a special meeting, that we would address as much as we could at, all at one time.
And the other question is, this, this item is one of three for approval today?
That is correct.
And, and this one is part of the three?
Is part of the three?
And together, they amount to an additional $5 million ratepayer expense?
No, this, this isn't the amount of $2.1 million. The next one is a cost reduction in the development activities for the transitional cluster, and in the third one, there's an increase, a recommended increase of $5 million, and that we'll go over.
So I guess it just, to me, it just raises a question as to, as to, as to the planning of this, that this should have been in the normal process of these budgeted items of the $25 million, and now we're seeing an additional two, plus, if you, if you look at the other two items coming up, that's, it's a total of about five. So that just, I'm just wondering, why, why was it handled this way and in, in a special meeting? When, when, you know, we just met?
We have.
And the project's ongoing.
Yeah, the, the last item, which is amendment number two, is, I would say, the most time-sensitive, because we, we're, we have a schedule, next steps, we're awarding the contract, you know, which is time-sensitive, and other development activities, completion of the permitting on the line, and that is why, you know, we have asked, you know, to, to have this a special meeting, mainly.
And then the final question was, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the FERC, or with potential for blackouts with summer coming up, does it? I mean, if.
No.
I mean, it just raises that in my mind, that, I mean, if, I understand that there might be litigation, and there was an item in closed session, and so to me, it just kind of raises a red flag, and, and I just feel that there's something missing here that, that we call for a special meeting to approve something, and this is one part of three, and, and the way I read this, it turns out to be a $5 million increase in total amount of the project. So I just wanted to make that statement, but I.
The cover memo that you have says that the item was not budgeted, but I think that's a mistake. If you look in the Major Work Authorization itself, it shows you where, what line item that it was budgeted for. I think that I just, I just was looking in there, so I wanted to make. Oh, it, it wasn't provided with the agenda packet, the MWA itself, the Major Work Authorization? Okay, we, it would be helpful in the future if we provided the budget book with that highlighted, so you could see where that information was embedded in the budget. It might take a couple hours, because that's a big document, but we will certainly do that for you. And with respect to MWAs coming to you, and particularly these three, it was not the philosophy of previous energy management or the, or the board that these things come to you in the ordinary course of business. Well, we've been made aware that now this is a requirement, and these are, these three items that you see today are time-sensitive. The last one is the most critical piece. All of them are in support of the system, but the last one is particularly sensitive and particularly time-sensitive going into summer. So that was the purpose. We were looking to economize on time, and so if we can provide additional clarity or additional information, we'll certainly do that with respect to where these are budgeted, going, we can provide it as an update to you, or we can provide it going forward as, as part of the ordinary course of business.
In the past, we, we, as a committee.
Sure, Hickonbottom, if you want to use the mic?
Kurt, what's the, oh, I'm sorry. In the past, we as a committee worked on budget along with the board, and we didn't have surprises like this.
Yeah, actually, I remember that. When we look at the budget, I saw have some directors, and I'm setting up a meeting with my staff, hopefully to get two of the new directors and to go over, kind of like we used to do the subcommittee meetings. And so I've instructed my staff to get their sections budgets together for the 18th, and we're going to go in detail on the, on the budget, and we're going to invite Director Benson and Director Galindo to that meeting to give them more knowledge and see if they can respond, and get more in-depth knowledge of the budget. So that's kind of the way we used to do it, where we would go with the subcommittees. Director Benson, in that conversation, actually said, well, maybe the board will discuss going back to the subcommittee format, because there is more information available in that format. So we'll see how that works out.
Mr. Stills? Mr. Stills?
Yes.
Has the board approved the 2013 budget?
No, the board is set to vote on that 2013 budget on the 19th of this month.
Okay, and the way we understand the conversations previous is that this item before us, that 2.117350 million is included in the 2013 budget, just, it's not approved yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead in Imperial Valley. Any additional comments?
When is the next board meeting?
The 19th, tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
And actually, they'll, they'll be talking about the ECA issue tomorrow, the change in the ECA, and then the board will be looking at voting for the 2015 budget down on the 19th.
Vice Chair Gomez, we can't hear anything right now. I'm sorry, there was a comment by Mr. Stills regarding a comment or question from Mr. Anderson. If you would both please restate your comment, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Stills?
My question was, when was the next board meeting? And I believe it's on the 19th, or, no, tomorrow, right?
Right. The, the board tomorrow on item number 14 has an adoption of resolution regarding changes to the energy cost adjustment rate, and the use of the rate stabilization funds become effective April 1st, 2013. That is a, will be a result of the rate hearings where they were talking about the changes to the ECA rate. So they'll get a chance to vote on that tomorrow, and then on the 19th, if they vote that in or don't vote it down, then the 19th, the board's supposed, budget, the 2013 budget is supposed to be brought back to them, and then they'll vote on the budget.
Question?
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, at our last meeting, you, you wanted the ECAC to vote on your, the funding for, for the budget, the 36 million and the 22 out of the special fund, and I believe in Coachella, there was a comment, why should we vote before the rate hearing that was supposed to happen on Wednesday night?
Correct.
Now we're meeting in a special meeting, and I don't even see the, the vote, call for the vote for the backing of the ECAC for the meeting for tomorrow.
Actually, that, that is probably, I don't know if it's my fault or if it's Greg Broking's fault. Greg Broking and the financial department was one handling the ECA portion of that. When we went to the board with these MWAs prior to that rate hearing, Director Galindo asked if these MWAs had been shared with the ECAC, so I asked my staff to, because it's the time-sensitive to schedule this meeting, I didn't talk to Greg Broking. Quite frankly, it's been a little hectic at the IID, and so just a communication slip.
Any additional comments? Mr. Pettis?
I'm concerned about the, the timing of this issue. If it was time-sensitive, when it had come last year, as part of last year's budget, so it would have been discussed as prior, you know, as last year's budget, so that you would have had to go ahead or approved or denied, whatever it may be, in a timely manner, as opposed to all of a sudden having it to come even before the board even adopts their budget. What if they were to say, no, we don't want that? Then what?
In terms of?
See, because they're talking about, about reductions, and we don't know what they're thinking about.
It's overall, all the projects, huh?
Okay. I will tell you, when I got into the Energy Department back in the PMO, one of the things that I found is that the transmission planning process had been bypassed, for whatever reason, I don't know. I reported that out to the board. The board asked me when we would start getting transmission plans in. I gave them a preliminary transition plan in December, somewhere towards the end of the year, and told them we were going to be refining that plan. We got all the transmission planning groups back together to start figuring out where the transmission plan is. This is, these are projects that are coming out of that planning process that we've determined we need to get in place prior to the summer's timeframe coming up. They're time-critical. We have to order material, get the material here, and be able to put it in before we can't get control of the circuits. So some of that is, is coming back into the planning process, is correcting things that were not right, and that's all I can say.
Any additional comments? No more comments from Old Central. Thank you. Ms. Kay?
Yes, I have a question about the, the ongoing planning. So it sounds like as you're moving forward and looking at these projects, is this something that we'll be seeing on a more regular basis? Is this going to be the process that we will follow from here on out as you identify a project through the planning process? You'll bring it to this group, we hear it, and then you ask for us to support the project, and then it goes to the IID board? Is that the process that we'll be doing now?
Well, actually, what I hope to do is, as we finalize this transmission plan, and we're, we've got everybody working on what we call an IRP, and then we're working a complete strategic planning process. As we get a more definite plan in place, what I hope to do is bring the entire plan to this committee and the board for approval of that plan moving forward, and then we'll break out project by project as it comes up for the approval process. But it will come to this committee prior to going to the board for a vote. So that's kind of the process that we're looking at.
And then as a follow-up, how does this play into the budget? Because it sounds like we're moving to approve a budget that may not necessarily have all of the projects clearly identified that you're still determining through the plan.
We've put some of the preliminary portions in the budget as placeholders. We think that will be modified as we move forward, but I think I'll have budget limitations this year, and we'll be looking for implementation of what we need in the, in next year's budget to start expanding that out. So as we get a more definitive plan, you're going to see more definitive requirements. But I think this budget will have certain budgetary restrictions, and if it's critical for us to move forward, we can do a midstream adjustment coming back to the budget process.
So the projects that we're looking at today, those are three that you've identified. There's an immediate need associated with them, and they've already have, had a placeholder in the budget, so the numbers that are being brought before us are not going to require any type of a budget adjustment or a change to anything that's going to be recommended to the IID board for approval?
No, no, they are not going to require. This project that I'm presenting today, they have been included in the, in the proposed budget for this year, and, no, they are not going to require adjustments.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions in Coachella Valley? Ms. Salley?
Hi.
Hi. I'm just wondering, this is a requirement, is that right? We must do it?
Yes.
There really is not any way that, that the board could say no then to this project, right?
It's a project that is, has been identified through planning studies and is needed.
Okay, so and the others are also top priority, must, must-dos?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, to ask you this one question. At the last meeting I attended, I was asking about the updating of the very antiquated equipment with IID. And I understood that in last, or this month, we were going to get a report on that and how that was affecting the overall operation of our power generating capacity. And I don't believe we've gotten that report as yet. I just, I'm wondering how all of these budgetary items would be affected by, you know, if we spent some of our reserves on updating the IID equipment, that part seemed to me to be a priority issue as well. I know that we don't have unlimited funds, but I'm just trying to get to the bottom of that one question.
I think that goes back to the Integrated Resource Plan that we're talking about. And in that plan, I've asked Belen Valenzuela, who's our Resource Assistant Manager, to talk with our Generation Group and make sure they get an asset management plan for replacement of generators that probably are, probably not efficient. So hopefully, when I start seeing that plan, that'll be incorporated into it. We're presently targeting that, well, we just had a meeting last Friday on it, I've seen some of the write-ups on them. We're targeting having a draft done by mid-April and then finalizing that plan after that. But again, I've asked for that asset management look for generators to be in that plan.
Okay. May I ask why the board thought that we should give our opinion on this if this is a must-do?
No, I, I think the board just, I, I believe the board members hold this committee in high regard and I think what they wanted to hear was the committee's opinion prior to their voting. And I think that's the, the reflection that I pulled out of the comments from the board meters, board members at the board meeting. So, you know, I've asked for this meeting prior to us going back to the board and just to take care of the concerns of the board, to make sure that this committee had heard. And I think what you'll see is we'll start processing more of these MWAs through this committee and discussing them before we go to the board.
Okay, so it's more or less explanatory rather than, I'm sure that if it's a must-do, there won't be any vote against it, right?
I can't tell you how, I can't tell you how the board's going to vote.
Okay, okay. Well, somebody else here has a, has a question.
Mr. Baird?
It's, maybe it's a general comment. I know we just recently celebrated the 100-year anniversary of IID and I'm a little concerned that, and not particularly with the current administration that's there at this moment, that there isn't an ongoing plan for replacement of obsolete material, equipment or inefficient equipment. Why has it taken 100 years to get the plan to us or to the public? I'll leave it at that. You might not even have an answer, but it's, it's a point that this citizen and rate payer is concerned about.
Well, I, I don't have an answer to it. What I can say, it is one of my goals to get asset management in place and start looking at the strategic life cycle of the assets that we have out there. Our generators pose a little bit of problem because our maintenance cycles are so good, our generators last 50 years. It just comes down to the efficiency of them and we need to look at that. There are some things that are going on within the energy market. There's what's calling, coming that's called an energy imbalance market and I'm probably going to talk a little bit at the summit about that market. But it will make us look at the optimization of our generating assets, maybe creating another revenue stream selling into the imbalance market. So we're going to be forced to look at that and look at that asset management of those to have as efficiency, as efficient units as we can. And then if we have optimized units, when we have units available, even selling into the imbalance market. So those are all goals that we hope to get into the asset management, the Integrated Resource Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stills. Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. I think primarily our questions are surrounding the, the process under which we are conducting ourselves now and there seems to be a procedural shift, which we welcome. We're happy that the board wants our input. We've asked for it for many years and now they've turned around and given it to us. So it's going to take us a little bit of an adjustment as a committee and I'm sure it's going to take a little bit of adjustment from staff, but we welcome the opportunity to give input on these very important projects. And we recognize that the plan is developing, so it's going to take us some time before we can get our arms around all of the projects that are going to be proposed to the board. But we look forward to the presentations on each of these projects as staff identifies them as projects that will move through the budget process so that we can be informed and aware of these projects prior to the budget process period. And once the project budget cycle goes through, then these projects will be included in that. So there won't be this herky-jerky, special meeting, cart before the horse feeling that we have this evening. So thank you for reporting on that item. There are no further questions. Staff is asking.
There is additional question, comment from Mr. Abadi.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Abadi.
I think, Mr. Sandoval, Mr. Stills, I guess it's the process, if, if the action we're taking is to make sure that this is part of the budget, and I'm all for it, as Mr. Higginbottom had talked about before, we had input. Some of these look familiar and some of them even been approved in O11. So I'm, you know, I guess anything that I would approve, we have to be contingent upon completion of the rate hearings and the board approving the budget. But making this part, making this line item that it's identified and what have you, I'm glad to approve to keep it in the budget.
And again, that's a logical representation, but subject to that, we need to make a budget change.
Yeah.
And I agree with that. If that was, if the motion was made to support these, subject to them being in the budget and the budget passing, then that's something that we would support because without a budget, it's really hard to say, yes, we're going to approve this. But again, these are projects that we've identified that are time-sensitive that we need to start moving on.
Well, the 111's two, two years late, so I realize that they're, they're sensitive, I'm just, the process, but if they're in the budget, I don't have any problem supporting these projects as, as they're line items, as they're represented.
Which one are you talking about?
Well, just as a whole, I'm looking at all three. I do have questions on number two, but we spent a lot of time on the first one. I just wanted to move through and clear up the process.
All right.
Okay, if, if that concludes the comments, is there any objection from the committee members to vote on all three as a block after we have all three presentations? Is that okay with staff?
Additional comment from Mr. Abadi?
Yes, Mr. Abadi.
Well, if we're going to work, finish this real fast, I had a question on number two, you have E, page E10, so I'm going to go back.
Mr. Abadi?
Oh.
Mr. Abadi, we're going to go ahead and hear the presentations first before we take a motion for all three.
Okay.
Is that okay? That way staff can get everything out on the table and we can make one blanket proposal.
Is that okay?
So Mr. Johnson, Mr. Sandoval, would you continue with item number four, Transitional Cluster System Upgrades Amendment Number One?
Thank you. We're ready to move to the presentation number two, which is Transitional Cluster System Upgrades Development Activities and it's amendment number one. I'll start saying that this projects were triggered by a open access transmission transitional cluster, open access transmission tariff interconnection request in the order of almost 200 ma, what's a couple of years ago. We went through all the system impact study and facility study, we identify the, the network upgrades describing this amendment number one. You know, the project numbers are described in the bottom of this front page, but I'll go to the drawing in the last page of this presentation to give you an overview of the nature of this network upgrades. The first project in the top of this network upgrade is identified through the transitional cluster studies was Path 42, which consists of the upgrade of the existing 230 KV transmission lines in the northern portion of our system. This transmission lines run from our Coachella Valley substation to Ramon, Devers. And it consists of the reconductoring of the line, replacing the existing conductor and installing two conductors per phase, tower reinforcement, foundation reinforcements. This upgrade is going to double, almost double the capacity of the line from its existing 600 ma rating, 800 ma thermal rating to go close to 1500 ma. So this is what we have been calling the, the low hanging fruit. This investment can give us a lot of capacity that is going to pretty much remove a bottleneck as the lines from Midway, our Midway Substation North, pretty much have the capacity, the thermal rating of 1600 ma, thermal rate capacity. And up to here with this transmission, I have a 1600 ma thermal rating and the bottleneck right now currently is from Coachella Valley to Mirage Ramon. And again, this is very cost-effective and, and a good project for the district because it's also going to entice, you know, the export renewable resources to the California ISO at the Mirage-Devers substations. The second project in this transitional cluster is the Midway Banister Phase Two. Phase one was built to a, this geographical point, Hoover and English Roads, half a mile east to the west and all the way going to a new geothermal development in Hudson Ranch. Midway Banister Phase Two is going to add the second circuit to the existing transmission line and extend a new 230 KV transmission line to a new geothermal development in the southern portion of the Southland Sea. The third project is the High Line to El Centro Switching Station. This project considers upgrading an existing lattice towers that run from a, from El Centro Switching Station to one mile south of High Line Substation. Those two circuits run at a lower voltage and the project consists of upgrading it to a double circuit to 30 KV. Again, this project is going to close a 230 KV loop from Imperial Valley Substation to El Centro High Line, all the way up to our interface with the ISO. And this is going to close our 230 KV loop and it's going to enhance, you know, our export capability. The fourth project is the S Line Imperial Valley to El Centro Switching Station. And again, we're going to, we're trying to upgrade the existing single monopole, woodpole, to double circuit to 30 KV transmission line and it's about 18 miles of upgrade. Okay, going back to the presentation, so a couple of years ago, the generator, the developers entered in interconnection agreements with the district and they funded this development activities. And let me give you a definition of development activities. So all the work that is needed to permit the line and to get it ready for construction and this considers and the environmental permitting, right-of-way assessment in preliminary engineering to, in order to obtain a request for proposal, to go out to the street and get a solicitation to get a pricing for the cost of all these projects. As I mentioned, excuse me. This major work authorization was originally approved in May of 2011 in the amount of $8.7 million. The transmission, yes. And, yes, and that was, yeah, and this transitional cluster customers funded this development activities. I think we have about $6.1 million collecting from them. Jamie, is that, or higher number? $6.8 million. And at this point in time, we have been working in this development activities and, for example, Midway Banister Phase Two, the environmental permitting has been approved. The S Line also the environmental permitting has been approved. A and B Line, we are close to get that environmental permitting, actually was, got posted at the beginning of this month, so we are close to get that permitting. And in terms of a Path 42, we have been working with BLM and Southern California Edison on that and we expect to get that environmental permitting completed by September of this This amendment number one is needed to bring this transitional cluster system upgrades, development activities, MWA, into alignment with all this revised scope and cost. You know, we have done work for the last 18 months, two years, and now with the help of internal auditors, you know, we have been going through this administrative housekeeping and I'll go in detail and explaining what this means. One of the things that we're doing is only development work is going to be done under this MWA. The original scope considered environmental monitoring and quality assurance, quality control, which are going to be removed out of this MWA. Also, new project numbers are going to be set up to track the implementation and closure of these projects in the next phase. So we're keeping development activities only in this phase one and again, all the implementar closures in a separate project, in separate projects. Other clarifications to, we are doing to this project is we are removing the 92 KV reconducting work, which was included in the original scope of work. This is, once we completed the system impact study, we determined that there was no need for this work, so we're going to remove through this amendment number one, that, that work and that cost, as well as the remedial action scheme, as this is going to be done under a separate project, the project 10294. One thing that we are adding, because it was identified in the final system impact study, was the Nylund Switching Station, the 161 92 KV. It was identified in this final study as needed and we're including it as part of the scope. Another thing that we're doing under this amendment one is we're removing certain activities out of the service agreement that we have with the owner's engineer, which is AECOM, and pretty much removing the environmental monitoring and QAQC, which is going to reduce the service agreement from the existing $4.325 million to $3.24 million. With this, what we are proposing is to reduce the total MWA budget from the existing approved amount of $8.7 million to $5.778. This is a reduction of $2.925 million. And we already have a schedule of what, what is needed through September 2013, which is when we expect to complete these development activities and we think this is enough to, to complete the work. Going to project financials, on the top you have the project original scope without contingency in the amount of $7.56 million. One of the things that we have identified in this amendment one is we have a slight reduction in the IID internal cost of only $9,000, $9,800. Environmental costs, we see an increase and this is mainly due to BLM request for a consultant to help them in this processing of the permitting for Path 42, as well as a cost recovery agreement. They, they want $150,000 to do all this administrative cost recovery. Also, in the original scope of work, we considered that IID internal, our real estate department was going to spend was going to spend close to $2.3 million on right away activities, which most of them have been performed by the owner's engineer. With this, we are reducing that amount by $2.3 million. And also, the owner's engineer service agreement, we have seen a reduction of $1 million. This is because of the removal of the activities that we just mentioned, the environmental monitoring and QA QC. And in terms of our outside services, a couple of projects required additional work in terms of consulting, structural analysis, this was Path 42 and A and B Line. And that having an increase in the amount of consulting services, $578,000 mainly. It's not everything, all the $578,000 this consulting, but it's one of the main factors for that increase. With this, the subtotal goes to $5,024,000. And with the 15% contingency of $753,000, we have a new total of $5.778 million. With this, staff recommends, the advisory committee to recommend the board the approval of this transitional cluster upgrades, development activities, MWA, number one. At the next board meeting in the amount of $5.778 million. Any question you might have?
You mean the reduction?
The reduction.
From seven to five.
Yes, from 8.7.
Vice Chair Gomez, do we have any questions in Imperial Valley?
Mr. Larson?
Thank you for your presentation. I do have a question. You said that there was a remedial action scheme work to be completed under the project was removed and was going to be done at another time? What's the cost of that and why are we pulling that out now?
The need for that project has been identified as part of the upgrade of Path 42 and to improve certain reliability conditions that we have in the Coachella area. Therefore, that was presented to the board on January, I would say, and it's already approved in the amount of $5.7 million.
Yep. Both the line upgrade for Path 42 and the remedial action scheme or the RAV scheme have been approved by the board and are moving forward at this time. So it's been pulled out of this and it's a, they're separate projects moving forward. You'll see another portion that we think we need to get on Path 42 following this. But that's already went for board approval. The rest of these, this is just really a big negative change order to bring the into
Another question, IID right away cost. Obviously, when we planned this, or you guys planned this, there was a thought that right away was going to have to be purchased and obviously it wasn't. Or was it just a huge number that got reduced? Or how did we come to that? And then I'll ask one more question, why you think about that is, in normal, at least in the prior project, we saw 10% contingency. And this one we see 15%. Is there, are we going to try to keep contingencies the same throughout the system? So we have to try to determine why is there more contingency with this one than the previous?
Yeah, we make determination, make this a 15% contingency because of the unknowns when we started this process, you know? We have to go through surveying of all the right aways, L drawings, appraisals, you know, there's a lot of activities where we need to do more, more analysis. And that's why, you know, because of the unknowns, we asked for a higher than normal contingency. And yes, when we estimated this, $2,315,000, yeah, we tried to be conservative because of the unknowns.
Let me also add, in normal project management, because the estimation process is iterative, it depends on where you are in your project flow. If you're in the front part of a project where you're using high level historical values, your contingency is probably plus or minus 30% somewhere in that range. The closer you get, if you're getting somewhere close to between 10 and 30% of your design drawings, that should drop plus or minus about 20%. Before you go to construction, the national standard is plus or minus 10%. We've utilized plus or minus 10% because we've asked our people, depending where they are, before we go with an MWA, try to get to that last part where we have some type of scope certainty. And so that's where that 10% came from. We're still in the development activities, which is backup stream for that. So some of the unknowns there, we're asking for a little bit higher contingency.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions? Nobody else here? Just one moment, Mr. Hernandez.
I heard you throw out a couple of numbers in relation to the developer contributions. And I think I heard upfront, there was about 8.5, you said?
What did they agree to?
No, they agreed to what was, the cluster was much larger to begin with, and then it whittled down. So rather than continually shift costs back and forth, we went with the number that was the most final. That number was $8.7 million. But we only had developers at that point able to fund 6.8. But we didn't think that we were going to come anywhere close, given the contingency that we're on.
Is there any more expected to come in?
No, this was an experimental process. And the thought behind IID entering into these experimental agreements was that when we got down the road, should these projects never materialize or these developers never want to sign a binding commitment and move forward with IID, the development phase activities for required network upgrades for later coming generators would be much easier to construct because the worst part of the development was done. The permitting was done, the right away was assessed. You know, those, those are the most difficult and time consuming portions of development. So at this point, we would be in a position to potentially just move to construction. That's why they were.
And that amount is part of the 31 total projected project cost at this time?
That is, that is the second, the next project I'm going to go through.
But it's all part of the same thing, no?
No. The S, high level cost estimate of all this projects, network projects was a little bit over $200 million. $2.75, including Gentise, I think.
But the 31 is for, projected for this budget cycle then?
The 31 is, what we are going to present next, which is the Path 42, only the reconducting, Coachella Valley break in one half, and the capacitor bank.
So the numbers of, these other numbers that I asked about are not specific to the Path 42?
No, they're going to be, they're going to be, the S Line, our Midway to Banister portion, the A B line, those would be out there. We're not moving forward with some of those at this time. The only one we have an MWA that the board has approved is Path 42, simply because it puts us in a better position within the state, within the region, because we've got excess capacity to get energy out of here.
And then the last question is, on this budget, items that are referred to in the presentations, to the lines and the proposed budget that hasn't been approved, when do the 2012 numbers become final? That are going to be good numbers for this budget?
You mean the 2013?
No, 2012.
2013, right?
2012, to be able to compare what has been spent thus far in terms of the total project, is this the best estimate here on what we're seeing?
These are updated numbers. That's, that's what they're doing right now. They've looked at the numbers, they've looked at what they had out there. They're actually just doing a negative change order to bring those numbers down into, into line.
Okay. And the actual costs have been included in this document.
I believe there is no additional comments or questions from El Centro.
Do we have any questions in Coachella Valley? Mr. Osborne?
Thank you very much. In this report, we talk about IID's internal auditors were involved in their review process for this amendment. I take it these are the financial auditors and why were they involved in this project?
Just to take a second look, you know, to all the activities, what we were doing, this housekeeping, we were removing projects, adding projects, you know, and that's pretty much what they were doing, checking that everything was.
Actually, what we're trying to do is create an audit trail to make sure, since these were accumulated and it's going to break out to individual projects, they've been working with the auditors to make sure that that audit trail is created for projects moving forward off this development activity.
Okay, thank you. And another question, previously in discussions regarding Path 42, up here we've asked for a map showing the location of those Path 42 improvements for the Coachella Valley. And we'd like to have that at some point in time so we can see where these lines travel through our area.
Well, I can put one in the, we cannot share this information because of SIPs, you know, Homeland Security, because it, any geographical depiction of critical facilities is not allowed. But I can put something on the screen.
You can put it on the screen, but we can't pass it out. You can't have it. So we can kind of show you that there is SIPs requirement, so we can't be obliged.
Okay, okay.
I can, I can put that drawing on the, I just need to change presentations. Let me just do it. Yeah. Well, I can do that at the end. Is that okay?
Okay, well, and then in regards to these items, as on the agenda today, items two, three, or these three items, a bulk of these items are here up in Coachella Valley in the Ramon Road section. Are there concerns that we should have up here regarding reliability of our systems up here in the sense that we're having this special meeting to strengthen this system?
Well, improving reliability is always a concern for us, you know, for energy, you know, with, nothing in particular, other than we would like to have the Ramon Capacitor Bank in service prior to summer next year. And in the other projects, yes, Path 42, we are working with Southern California Edison. There's a lot of activities linked to other, other parties that we would like to, to schedule. And again, we don't want to miss the date that we have scheduled for construction, which is October, November of this year. So that's, that's what the critical timeline that we have on projects.
Okay. Well, we certainly appreciate their work up here to make us.
Outage coordination with Edison and other parties, you know, ISO.
You have to remember, on the KNKS Line Two, we have a lot of geothermals and renewable energy running across that line. And we're trying to minimize the outage by bringing a lot of these projects together and minimize the downtime for these projects. It's something that we don't want some of these geothermal companies accusing us of keeping them off the line because we have project after project and outage after outage. So we're trying to coordinate a lot of that, consolidate some of this.
Very good, very good. Thank you.
Are there any further questions in Coachella Valley? Seeing then, we will move on to item number five, Coachella Valley Ramon Devers 230 KV line upgrade, Path 42 implementation closure amendment number two. Mr. Sandoval?
Thank you. Let me proceed with the number three. Let us, okay, it's almost ready. This MWA was originally approved on August 2011 in the amount of $25.82 million. Last year, in August 2011, it was taken back to the board. You know, we changed the funding source, you know, this is a critical project, strategic project for the export renewables. And it was justified, you know, to go with the same amount, $25 million, and reaffirmed by the board. This amendment, amendment number two is needed to bring this project, Coachella Valley Ramon Devers, in alignment, into alignment with the revised scope and cost derived from the findings through this development phase. Also, as I mentioned, we have gone through this development activities. We went out in a solicitation process and we received the responses from this bidders. In parallel, IID staff had been working in a couple of projects that we have seen and identified the need. One is the Coachella Valley Break-in One Half, which is a reliability project for that Coachella Valley area, and as well as the Coachella Valley Capacitor Bank. Based on the cost and the need for these projects, we identified the need to consolidate and pretty much give, put all these projects together. Why? Because of the, not just the cost savings, but also because by having all these projects handled by one contractor, we will improve the coordination of all this work, this project into one, handle it by one development contractor. So the recommendation in this amendment number two, the main recommendation is to add these two projects into the original scope. Again, one of the things that we're trying to minimize is the outage for geothermal developers. And we believe we can do that by integrating and consolidating all this work with one contractor. The original project considered only the reconducting of Path 42. This KNKS line between Coachella Valley, Ramon Devers, is about 20.8 miles of transmission line where we're planning to go in and replace the existing conductor and installing two conductors per phase, tower reinforcement, foundation reinforcements. And with this, almost duplicating the capacity, the thermal capacity of the line. So again, the proposal here is to add these two projects. Also, we are taking the opportunity to do some administrative housekeeping by creating a separate project number, a new project number, project 10335, which is going to be set up to track the implementation closure of this project. And separating all development activities and leaving it on the other MWA, other P project numbers that we have. Other activity that we're doing here is the removal of all development work, as this is going to be, going to be done on the project P 6796. We are revising cost estimates. One of the findings out of this development work is that we need to expand Coachella Valley Substation. Therefore, we are adding $1,050,000 in order to do a land swap. We are working a land swap with BLM. And we are also adjusting the IID's internal labor project cost. And this mainly because of the addition of the two projects, Coachella Valley Break-in and a half, and the 230 KV Capacitor Bank. We're also removing all development work. And by this, we are removing the cost for environmental monitoring, oh, excuse me, we are reducing the environmental monitoring and QA QC cost by outsourcing this through In terms of justification for these two projects, the Coachella Valley Break-in One Half, I'll say that this substation bus configuration is not up to par to the current system condition. You know, with Coachella Valley carrying almost 60% of a total system load. And also, the fact that we, this, through this substation, we, we carry a lot of the renewable exports. Also, it's a project that during our strategic meetings, you know, everybody from all the areas of IID operations, planning, transmission engineering, everybody have agreed that this is a project that is needed. We have a pretty good consensus about this need. One of the things that we're mitigating through this, Coachella Valley Break-in One Half, is the possibility of tripping offline two large transformers that we have in Coachella Valley Substation, Bank One and Two, for certain transmission line outage or maintenance conditions. And this is also going to improve and by, well, reduce the likelihood of tripping existing merchant generators connected to this collector system. In terms of the 230 KV Capacitor Bank, rated at 48 megawatt, I went through the, this explanation through the first, with this analogy, why we need additional reactive support. through the first, with this analogy, why we need additional reactive support, so again, we need this additional reactive support to increase Path 42 rating above his 600 megawatts, and also, we are required by NERC WAC, you know, reliability criteria to produce reactive power needs, and these ones are going to help us by providing a steady, well, improving the system voltage during steady state and system disturbances. Moving to project financials, on the top of the slide, you have the original project scope without contingency, the amount of $22.5 million. Again, this original scope considered only the reconductoring, tower reinforcement, foundation reinforcement. What we are proposing here, and this scope changes, is the inclusion of the Coachella Valley Break-in One Half in the amount of $4.618 million, as well as the Coachella Valley, well, the 48-megawatt Capacitor Bank in the amount of $851,000. Moving up a little bit, on this Coachella Valley Break-in One Half, you know, comparing to our internal cost estimates, you know, we have seen that this solicitation responses give us only 1.2 saving in the cost, you know, it was slightly lower than our internal estimates, but in terms of the capacitor bank, you know, the cost that we are, was being provided by this contractor is about 50% of our estimates, you know, they're giving us a very good pricing on this installation of this capacitor bank. The next one is the addition of this right-of-way at Coachella Valley in the amount of $1 million and $15,000, and we have an adjustment to the internal labor cost because of the addition of Coachella Valley Break-in One Half and the 230 KV Capacitor Bank, and this is all the IED internal areas, you know, there's a lot of work in telecommunications, relays, scheduling operations, et cetera, you know, that requires more work. As I mentioned, this solicitation process from this RFP-921 resulted that the reconductoring work is resulted to be, through this proposal, 11% less than our own estimates, you know, considering the original amount of $25 million. And, but also by removing the, the environmental monitoring QA QC from the originals, from the service agreement, we expect a reduction in the amount of $1.475 million. Again, we're going to go out and do this work through a separate solicitation, and we would expect to see a saving of $604,000 from the original estimate. With this, the subtotal for the projects is in the amount of $27.2 million, and with the 15% contingency, you add $4 million, $4 million and $81,000 for a new amendment two total cost of $31.288 million. This increased the original MWA by $5 million, $5.405 million for a, again, for the new total of $31.288. With this, staff recommends the Energy Consumer Advisory Committee to recommend IED Board to approve the Coachella Valley to Ramon Devers 230 KV line upgrade, also known as Path 42 Amendment Number Two, for additional $5.4 million, which will increase the total authorized expenditure under the original MWA from $25.82 to $31.288 million, and this includes the 15% contingency. Any questions?
Vice Chair Gomez, do we have questions in Imperial Valley?
Yes, Mr. Sandoval, mostly the costs identified in this project and the previous project, that was through the process of the Q, the system impacts, or the build-out, bringing it up to 600-megawatt line, and will those cost, I mean, that original cost, if it's part of the $200 million, what's proposed in the budget, that will be rebated back to the customer through a wheeling cost or a cost sharing agreement?
It's, we expect to have recovery through transmission service request, you know, I know we have a couple of projects, entities requesting already transmission from the gain capacity on the path, so.
Yeah, actually, when we look at Path 42, there are a number of considerations, and the considerations really go into some of FERC Order 1000, it's something that I know you're a little bit familiar with, but the issue is, this, this project here, Path 42, allows us to build capacity, to have capacity to export our own system, so we have time to get strategies in place for building transmission and maintaining our BA. This upgrade, along with the RAS scheme, the RAS scheme, this line's presently rated 600, and with the RAS scheme, it'll allow us to go from 600 to 800 megawatts, and we've got flow studies and a process we have to go through to achieve that, as the generation comes on, we should be able to achieve that. This upgrade will allow us to go from 800 to 1500 once the generation is there, and then it's a matter of going through the WAC rating process to get that rating up. So this gives us capacity in line that we can actually move energy out of Imperial Valley, it gets us ahead of the transmission curve, it buys us some time with FERC Order 1000 coming around, and allows us to get out in front of this transmission strategy. This Breaker and a Half scheme addition to this, and this bar compensation goes back to flowing the energy across it, and then the coordination of that to give us better coordination at CV Sub. We think that these additions are strategic to the operation of this line moving forward, and it's something that personally I think we have to do.
Mr. Still, or Mr. Sandoval, the build-out that I, we've seen, we saw a little bit of the map, the previous project, okay, as you move up into, I guess, into the Devers and stuff, you're getting into that demarcation zone, Edison's very much aware, you're making all of us aware and the rest of the public, they're very much aware that they're going to pick it up and run with it further up, and their commitment is there?
There's a lot of activities and a lot of coordination happening right now with Edison and the ISO, that's why we want to expedite this process, because we're scheduling outages for next year, Edison is also going to do the upgrade of their lines and their side of the fence, you know, we need to take one line in our system, and one line in their system in order to do the upgrade in a coordinated manner, so it's, you know, there's a lot of work, a lot of activity going on right now with them.
And that demarcation, there's actually an agreement that defines that demarcation. I think, Jamie, do you want to address that? That's actually, there's a, there's a negotiation going on with that definition of those SEEMS agreements, both at Mirage Devers and at IV Sub, and it will spill into the operational agreements that we're trying to get the Cal ISO to go to with Vilmker telling first, rather than us running counterflow, so, Jamie, you want to address that?
Mr. Sandoval, I just want to confirm that what you're really talking about are the west of Devers upgrades, is that your concern? The west of Devers upgrades, that kind of that, as that term has sort of been bandied about?
I'm concerned that, you know, we're going to build a four-lane highway, that there just wasn't a two-lane to pick it up.
I think in the interconnection process, you know, I think all transmission providers and BAs are sort of facing the same thing, it's the chicken and egg. I think that Edison views, or at least the Cal ISO's Board of Governors viewed, Path 42 as a critical piece of infrastructure to move forward with. There are issues on the Edison system west of Devers, but to the extent that energy from the IED system is procured by one of the ISO-controlled entities, their transmission planners are responsible for figuring out how that energy gets to them, and the cost for that is borne by the ratepayer of that particular utility. There are a lot of things going on, there's a lot of generation in Eastern Riverside County, and it seems like that congestion point is all coming into Mirage Devers, and those Devers, west of Devers upgrades are part of the ISO transmission planning process right now, where that will ultimately shake out, I'm not quite sure, but to the extent the energy from a generator located in the IED system is procured by one of the big three, or anybody indeed in the ISO footprint, the responsibility for those upgrades or that transmission would be borne by that utility that's serving load with that generation. I hope that's helpful.
No, thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I'm curious, on your project financials, in the red, and I may have not understood exactly what you were talking about, but you act as if these were cost savings, if I understood correctly, by going with one contractor to do multiple jobs, is that correct?
Yeah, we have a service agreement with a contractor, that he was going to do all the preliminary, development activities, plus QA QC, quality assurance, quality control, environmental monitoring, during the implementation phase of the project. Comparing with other sources, we believe that we have this services done at a lower cost, so we, we believe this is, will be a cost-saving for the project.
But there is other environmental costs that should be there, I mean, this is a reduction, but there's, there's an amount that's supposed to be there that we don't see?
No, it's, it's there, yeah, the spreadsheet with all the detailed numbers are in the MWA, and it depicts the cost. Another thing during this development activity for Path 42 is, when we started, we have a lot of concerns because the line traverses critical habitat, or is very close to critical habitat, you know, this is preserved, and so we have concerns about the cost for environmental, you know, as we are progressing and this environmental permitting, you know, we believe that those costs are going to be much less than what we originally estimated.
And my second question, I guess, is additional right-of-way costs for the substation expansion?
That is correct.
Can you tell us how big the expansion is, and what's going to cost a million $50,000 for an expansion?
The adjacent property belongs to BLM, and we're working with BLM in a land swap, you know, and there's a ratio of five to one, you know, it, our estimate is that, I think it's 20 acres, but the ratio that BLM is considering is expensive, that's why we're including that amount.
And is, so 20 acres, we're $50,000 an acre?
It's very expensive.
If I did my math right, $52,000 an acre?
Hundred, yes, a five-to-one ratio.
Five-to-one ratio, I mean, this really, highway robbery.
Will they take?
Do they take visa or master charge or something, I mean, that sounds ridiculous. I mean, do we need 20 acres, can't we do it five, five acres?
Some of the comments are not being heard, Laquinta.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we, with the addition of Bank Four that we took up there last summer, with the Breaker and a Half scheme, with the busing work that we have up there, yeah, the static bar compensators, we're going to need a little bit of room in that substation, and it's going to take the 20 acres to give us the room to get the lines in and out and everything, so there's no way to get around it, 20 acres is what we need, and with that five-to-one compensation, it's probably going to cost us 100 acres of BLM new land to be able to swap them for that, there's just no way to get around it. We'd rather do a one-to-one swap with them, but they, they don't have anything to do with that.
Wow, good luck.
Any additional questions? No more questions here in El Central. Do we have any questions in Coachella Valley? Ms. Saleh?
I have a question for Mr. Still about the upgrading of the equipment. Thank you, thank you. I'm just wondering, the upgrades that are needed in our equipment, some of our equipment being over 50 years old, would this not also require technological upgrades, things that require computer upgrades, et cetera? And I guess the basis of the question is, it concerns me that we're making lots of must-do repairs and upgrades to part of our system, where if we were to upgrade our main equipment, it might result in us not needing to do certain things that we're paying money to do today, I guess that's the basis of it. I know that in the computer world with programs what, being what they are, and advances coming along so quickly, couldn't that possibly happen? I'm sure we're not the only company facing this problem, it sort of goes back to the question that was asked about one system hooking up with another that's not quite ready. I mean, it could actually result in that hookup not working at all if it is a technology-related problem.
Well, I think something that you don't know about, or you may not know about, it's, we have an ongoing MWA where we have upgrades to our relay systems, bringing them into the new technology that's available today, so that's ongoing. We went through our SCADA systems, which is our control system, we've upgraded our EMS system, we're putting in a backup center, we're looking at those SCADA systems now, we're putting in dual porting on that, we're actually, you know, sending two different signals, one to our regular EMS, one to our backup now. Those RTUs in that backup control center reporting that are antiquated and in need of replacement are being replaced in that project, so there is an upgrade look as far as our controls that are out there in the system right now to bring those up to speed.
Okay, okay, well, that is, that's been part of my concern all along about not having the, you know, when I understood that we could lower our rates by 50% if we achieved the upgrades on, total upgrades on our system, I thought there must be some technological component to it.
Well, I think when we look at that, and it goes back to the generation, we have a lot of older generation assets. If you go back and look at the four gas turbines that sit out in Coachella, what we call our old office out there, area out there, that's about 80 megawatts, I think they're 20, 22 megawatts apiece, but they're highly inefficient. To run those for the 200 run-hours that we have from the permitting costs me about $250 per megawatt hour. That is some of the looks that we want to look at, that variable cost is pretty high for me to run. I might be able to do something better with newer contracts with developers, and be able to sell those into a marginal EIM market, actually create a revenue stream with them, so those are the types of looks that we'll be looking for.
Okay, well, thank you for the answer, I, you don't think that that might affect this thing we're voting, these items we're voting on, do you?
No, those are generation assets, this is a strategic hub for renewables, and it's also a strategic hub for Coachella Valley, we are in the process of upgrading this. Last summer, we put the 300 MVA transformer up there and then parallel the 2100s, that allowed us to actually, to carry a September 25 outage on the SWIPPAL line out here without any tripping throughout the area, and if you remember, a year previous to that, the tripping, we had a major blackout, so some of the improvements that we've made have actually made our system a lot more robust, these are some of the improvements that we need.
Will make it even more robust, yeah, I think you have done a good job with that, so I thank you very much.
Any further questions in Coachella Valley? Okay, that concludes all of the questions, thank you, Mr. Sandoval, we have before us proposal from staff to recommend to the Imperial Irrigation District Board of Directors approval of the Ramon Substation Capacitor Bank addition, the Transitional Cluster System Upgrades Amendment Number One, and the Coachella Valley Ramon Devers 230 KV line upgrade, Path 42, implementation closure amendment number two.
I'll make the motion, as long as I don't have to say it again.
Contingent upon budget approval is what, what this committee is considering.
I'll second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Bayard and a second by Mr. Osborne. Is there any further discussion? Vice Chair Gomez, is there anyone raising their hand up in Imperial Valley?
No, no, no arms.
No further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Vice Chair Gomez, are there any opposed?
No, none opposed.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, committee. Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. Thank you, Mr. Stillz. We'll move on to item number six, Coordinators' Report. Ms. Gonzalez, do we have a report this evening?
Well, actually, it's just one item that I wanted to bring to your attention. I have included the agenda for the Renewable Energy Summit that is occurring here this week in the Hultville Country Club, and I'd like to see if there are any members who are interested in attending. I, so far, have only heard from one, and I just wanted to be sure that you saw the agenda in case you did have some interest.
I think I already have an RSVP, but I don't know. Okay, we have Mr. Weber who's interested, so he'll get with you tomorrow.
Mm-hmm. I believe we already have Mr. Weber's as well.
Okay, okay. All right, does that conclude your report?
That includes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number seven, member comments. Mr. Weber?
Well, just a question, follow-up on the ECA rate hearings. I think, Mr. Stillz, you probably were in attendance, and I was just curious if there were any, if you could maybe provide us a summary of any comments as, you know, we didn't move forward with making a recommendation, and it'd be nice to hear if there was any, anything that actually occurred that we should be aware of.
I believe one lady made a comment, and that was that, and her concern was understanding more about the ECA rate and looking at what it actually meant. And then she was concerned with some of the comments, actually by the directors, about the renewables actually driving, the cost of renewable actually driving that ECA up. She absolutely did not believe that was the case, but nobody really argued with her over it because...
Well, hallelujah. Finally, the message is getting across, I guess, that renewables aren't necessarily cheaper than coal.
Well, she was, she took, she took exception to that, and I think a couple of the directors just chose not to engage her on that issue. They did comment that, yes, it was happening, but the argument is, she believed that renewables were the lifeblood of us moving forward and shouldn't be blamed for the high cost in the ECA, so.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe a recommendation, I don't know, maybe you already are acting on it, but if you could identify who that person was, you know, and have a conversation with them, follow-up to kind of go through the math of it, so they can see that, you know, how the math actually works. I think we all want to be green and hug a tree, like I said before, but the facts are the facts, and the numbers are the numbers. And while you can have a political persuasion, it's hard to have that modify the numbers. So it'd be nice if she could be, you know, maybe taken aside and maybe somebody can help her understand how it actually works.
Based on her comments, she actually will probably be in attendance at the next ECAC meeting, and probably, she sounded like she was going to be...
Oh, good, so I can have that conversation face-to-face.
Actually, she was at the last ECAC meeting. She was sitting in the back row back there on the left side. So, you know, it's just, I'm assuming by her comments she'll be at the next one, and she sounds like she's going to participate more in the board. She wanted the board to meet more after 5 o'clock, so more public could actually attend.
Do we, well, one other comment, it's just that I do appreciate the, it looks like the change in process and the way that the ECAC is being involved, almost, the way I equate it is in La Quinta, is being on the Planning Commission, is advising the council, is having a chance to see items come before and advise the council on actions. And that looks like that's the process that's now being implemented with the ECAC and the IED Board of Directors, and I think that's a really positive step, and I commend all those involved for helping that process move forward, because I think it's a step in the right direction.
Any additional comments in Coachella Valley? Vice Chair Gomez, do we have any comments in Imperial Valley?
Any comments? Actually, I just have one comment. Hopefully, nothing happened with this morning's small tremblers. Everything was...
No, we're okay. Are you guys okay?
Just, Mr. Stillz is going to make a comment. I'm not too sure if something happened or not.
Uh-oh. We felt it pretty strong, but we're okay here.
Actually, if something happened, I get an email. I got no emails, so our system held together fairly well.
Great.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, if there be no further comments, our business, this meeting will stand adjourned until April 8th. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.